Called to order a regular meeting tonight, Tuesday, October four, twenty twenty-two. Running out at six thirty P M. And we are in the city council chamber. The anchor location here at the West Valley City, sorry, twenty-sixty South Constitution Boulevard, West Valley City, Utah, eight four one one nine.
Is your microphone on?
I'll do again. Regular meeting tonight is on Tuesday, October four, twenty twenty-two, six thirty P M. And we are here in the council, city council chamber. And the anchor location here is the three hundred sixty, three thousand six hundred South Constitution Boulevard, West Valley City, Utah, eight four one one nine. Our council, every council member is here and Mayor Canland is on Zoom tonight. And she let me to conduct a meeting for her tonight and appreciate that very much. Also, she spending her time with family, but also she trying to have a meeting here with us. And so we grateful for that. Now, the turn over to council member Lox Northwell for opening ceremony.
Thank you. I invite all to please rise and join with me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Thank you. We have approval of minutes, September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. I'll turn over to the council.
Move to approve the minutes of September twenty-seventh.
Second.
We have a motion, hundred seconds. So all those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So this motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Common period. This one we have thirty minutes. And each one of you is speaker, has five minutes and speaks once. In front of you, you see that the monitor right in front of you, you can look at. You see the time, how much time you have left. Here, you speak directly to the mayor, but the mayor see on Zoom tonight. So directly to the mayor, pretend that me and I'll call your name. Just please just come to the podium and just say your full name and your address. Speaker number one, Jim V. Shark. By the way, the format is not the Q and A. Also, his format is not for, you know, debate, just straight to to me.
And there is a public hearing on the budget. So if you want to talk about that. So good evening, Mayor and Council. You guys are gonna approve the budget. One thing, the tractor that you're buying, I would like to, I would hope next year, we would see what the actual cost savings of spending this almost seventy-five thousand dollars is. Because that, that's one of the things they're using to buy. It's going to save labor. Let's, let's make sure Park and Reg gives you that information because you're taking it on faith that buying this piece of equipment is actually going to save them money. And, you know, man hours or whatever, it should be a simple report for them to generate. It took two less guys to do it, you know, and see if we're getting the return for the investment. I think in regular business, that's what you would have to do. And I think these directors should be held accountable that way. When they're asking for extra thing is the return on the investment. Code enforcement, the grass water, we had several people talk about it. Water bill, the actual part, water, part of your water bill, and I've talked about this several times. I have one of the greenest yards in my neighborhood. My actual water bill usage was eight dollars and twenty-five cents. So the actual water usage part of your water bill is not that high. And you don't let your yard die and then have to try and save it. So, you know, it didn't just die overnight. So. City properties, somebody brought up the property on the other side of Fairborn. That's actually city property and we should keep the weeds down. A couple of years ago, you guys, well, most of you that were here approved hiring of two employees, buying them a truck for over fifty thousand dollars so that would they could stay up on these, on these situations, yet we still have the same situations coming out there in residence or bringing it to our attention. And once again, if the city can't do it right, how can we ask our citizens? You know, to do it when as a city, we're not doing it right. So once again, hold the department heads accountable for what they're doing and not doing. We had our C and B, our Clean and Beautiful Awards breakfasts, breakfast last Saturday. And I was disappointed that nobody was able to come this year. So we had probably about twenty percent of our winners come. It was, it was fun, free breakfast you guys missed out on. So a tracking system for our code enforcement. We have it on our snow, snow removal and street sweepers. They know how many times they go down each one of the streets. Why don't we do something with our code enforcement? Because the question is, if, if they're out there and they're actually covering their beat with, with whatever system they're using, might be something to put on the code enforcement vehicles to see that the people are actually out there and where they're spending their time. It's, you know, something to think about and we're already using it on our street sweepers. And like I said, snow removal, you can go online, you can see where they're at, what streets they've done. And that might be something to think about for code enforcement. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Jim. Before we start a second speaker, we have the ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-eight is the public hearing tonight. So you, if you have something you want to say for that, the ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-eight, you can hold that in and then we can have that and you can speak. The second person is here is Mike Markham.
Okay, Mike Markham, I guess after last week, I'm gonna have to eat a little crow. Because I guess code enforcement has been out citing people with, they say just yellow lawns. I think there's more to the stories than what all comes out because they, it's, there's more to the story. There's weeds, there's, there's dirt spots in the lawn and stuff like that. It's just not because of yellow lawn. There's always more to the story. And then somebody was talking about a vehicle last week that was designated as inoperable. They called somebody, I maybe from the council that went up, looked at the car and the guy showed him how, and how it started it, backed it out of the driveway, drove it a lot, drove it around. I want to know how much time elapsed between the time that he got the citation and the council person went there and watched him drive the car. Because it doesn't take long to blow up the tires. Because I know there's got to be flat tires or other stuff wrong with the cars to get a citation. Because if I could get a citation for just cars, there's a house in my neighborhood that's got about five of them lined up along their driveway. That way it forces them to park their regular vehicles out in the street. So. You know, we need to get the full story on this stuff. We got people that come up, make the, the city look bad. You know, we had a nice little lady that come up and passed out a letter last week about, about getting the citations and they can't do it. You know, they can't afford to do it. They can't, they don't have time to do it. But it's like Jim said, it just didn't happen overnight. But you know, like I've said to the council many times before is the largest expense I have in my yard is my personal time and sweat. If a person's not learned how to sweat, that's why they don't have any money. Because you have to get out and work and no matter what you do. Now, do I like sweating? Oh, no. But I'll get out, I'll work in my yard. I've been known to put one of those lights on my forehead just so I could go out and mow my lawn. Because I want to get it done. I want things to look good. I don't want to be a deterrent to my neighborhood. And for some of the houses that in my neighborhood that I brought up that I didn't think code enforcement was working with. Code enforcement has been bending over backwards to try to work with these people. They've all been cited. Mr. Pyle knows which houses I'm talking about. These people just don't want to cooperate. They don't care. And taking the chance to be a bigot? Yes, it is a house full of about six Hispanic males that won't get out and mow the lawn and pull the weeds. I'm sorry, I'm a bigot, but that's the point we have right there. At least the house on the corner right for me, since I've sent in all the pictures, they're not parking on the front lawn anymore. Now they occupy a lot of the street. But they, you know, they put their dump trailer in the driveway. So I think they're at least trying. You know, I don't know, we're gonna have dumpsters in the neighborhood dropped off tomorrow. And there, there would be one right in front of their house, but the dumpster won't be able to be put there because there's always cars parked there. So they'll put it in the very close vicinity. So I'm hoping these people that have got all of this debris sitting around their yards, they will take advantage of this service. In the study meeting, there was a lot of talk about our garbage prices going up, sanitation fees going up. Personally, I think we need to round it up to two fifty and do it all at once. But, you know, we can't do that. Two fifty from two thirty-five. Keep math simple. So I just hope, you know, we can get it. We have a fabulous garbage plan, you might want to call it, with our regular can, with our big pickups, we have too many people that abuse it. And then you can order the dumpsters. Like I say, we've got dumpsters coming tomorrow for a fall cleanup. I passed out all my little letters last Thursday so that it gave everybody a solid weekend to get out, work in their yards and get everything ready to go on the dumpsters. So we'll just have to see where it goes from there. But I kind of have to apologize to code enforcement because they are out trying. Thanks.
Thank you. Third person, Bill Angel. Okay, close. Yep. Okay.
When one of their Andersons or Unes, whatever, sells on the open market for fifty thousand or one hundred and fifty thousand, I'll take, I'll take that, you know? So I've got several things here. I got. Let's see, date on this one is nine fifteen, abandoned junk or inoperable vehicles. I don't know how he can tell me that those are abandoned junk or vehicles from the street. They're not running. They weren't running. I had to buy batteries for them and put them in. And I got rid of them. I sold them at a big loss. They were parked on gravel that I had bought after a previous go around with the guys. Oh, wait, 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 wait. I gotta go back and start over. I'm sorry. Back to the winter of forty-eight, forty-nine. When I told you about the snow was as deep as the telephone poles. Actually, in Salt Lake, we got seven point four feet of snow that winter. In Nebraska, they got nine feet. It was a countrywide blizzard for months and months and months. And when it melted, I can remember going across the river, are there, yeah. The Jordan River on Thirty-Fifth South. And they had it sandbagged and the water was up about that far above the sandbags. And it flooded both sides. And it was just a great big lake when all that snow melted. Never seen it like that since. Okay, back to this other stuff. Anyway, whoever the officer was, his name is Patino. He said that I had abandoned junk and inoperable vehicles on my property. I don't know how he could tell that. They're clear at the back of the property. There are six foot fences around it. They're block fences. It's not parked next to a garage. How did he know that they were inoperable? Put a battery in one of them and just started right up. The other one, we had to do some work on. Okay, it says on the, on their above mentioned vehicles, they don't tell what the vehicles are. So they weren't licensed or what they were, said they need to be licensed and operable. I believe maybe code enforcement is trying to assert policy from the Division of Motor Vehicles. They don't say anywhere that you have to have your license, your vehicle licensed on private property. If you're going to operate it on the roads or public property, yes, you have to have a license. You don't have to have license in your yard. I have probably, I don't know, I'm probably down to six or seven vehicles right now. Okay, now. The important thing is, I was really impressed with your speech last week. We have a problem with, with code enforcement. I would like to have you and I become really close friends and have Nicole send us some stuff that code enforcement is doing and work together and see if we can't work something out because city manager pile has in the past said, we can't afford to to pay someone to go, be a go-between for the people that are, have complaints. But you and I could do that and we could expand the program where maybe to work into something, maybe it'd be just a clue, who knows, but I'm only give it more time than I've given on this. And that's, that's mine, my feeling about it. And then various of the other council members could, from time to time, maybe talk to some of these people in a one-on-one. I kind of like that idea. But. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is the Darryl, Darryl Curtis.
Yes, Darryl Curtis, thirty-eight sixty, South Marshall Drive, West Valley. Couple of things, in your study meeting, you're talking about speed humps. And I, I know when I approached the, the council a couple of years ago, or about a year ago or so about speed humps, I was told, oh, they can destroy the snow removal. And I was, I was pleased to hear that that's not true. That council member asked, well, how about snow removal? They said, oh, that's not a problem. So I don't know why, I was told a couple of years ago that that was a problem. They, they did install Pete's speed humps on Chatterley out by where I live. And then the, the comment was made, well, why doesn't the, the traffic divert down Deanne Drive? Deanne Drive, if you have cars parked to both sides of the street, there's only one lane of traffic can go down. Chatterley, if you have cars parked on both sides of the street, there's still two lanes of traffic, if not a little bit more. So I, I know I live over in that area. I'll, I'll avoid Deanne Drive just because it's just so congested. There's a lot of cars parked on the street and I'm not a homeowner there. I, I, I completely understand why you have to have cars parked in front of your house. I had three or four kids living with us at the, at one time with two or three different cars. There's no way we could get them all parked in the driveway. So I understand that completely. And a comment was made by, I believe is Mayor, Mayor Lane that mentioned, well, if the community wants to pay for it, why not? And then I, you know, that may not be a, a good thing to do. Well, why not? If the community wants to pay for it, that saves money on the budget, then why not? If they want to hunker down and raise money, three or four thousand dollars, whatever it takes to, to install that, then why not? That would be a good, good community involvement. Get the community that they can raise their own money. They can do that themselves. Yeah, they have to get someone to install the, the speed humps, but why not? Why not allow them to do that? I know just south of the USANA amphitheater, directly south, there's a community down there that's kind of is a stepchild of West Valley. They don't quite, they're quite, they're just right there on the boundary. And, and I know I've talked to some people there once and they said, you know, they have a lot of problems. They've asked the city to install some speed pumps to, to help with that. And they were told that, well, it's bad for the snow removal equipment. So there, there's some stories out there like that. The other thing that I'd like to just mention, and I've mentioned it before, I'm really concerned with the lack of sidewalks in our neighborhood by Hunter Junior High School. There's no sidewalks on Sixtieth West on the west side of the, of Sixtieth West. There are no sidewalks on Sixty-Fourth West on the east side and even on the west side in certain areas. And that's right there by Hunter, Hunter Junior High School. And I know that there was a child killed on Thirty-First and Bangit or years ago. And they put in that, that brand new overpass. And I think that's great. It's unfortunate that a child loses their life before a city or community or, or the state acts and responds to that. There was a child in, when my son was in junior high, one of his friends was hit by a car right there on Sixtieth West. It wasn't that bad. He, he got up and walked away fortunately, but there is that possibility. I'd just like to see that the city prioritize. I was told that sidewalks are a priority for communities or areas where there is a school. Well, this is right there by Hunter Junior High. And I've lived there for about twenty-eight years now and no sidewalks in twenty-eight years. So if it's not a priority in the twenty-eight years, I don't know when it's going to be a priority. And I hope it doesn't take an accident before someone pays attention and, and does something about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is minus wing.
Good evening. Miles Wind, twenty-seven sixty-six West, twenty-eight ninety South, eight four one one nine. I wasn't planning on talking about this, but since there's a stare right at me and kind of call out my comments. What I think Mr. Markham doesn't quite realize what makes him a bigot is that he will classify an entire population of people for a problem he's having with eight gentlemen. So that's, I'll just throw that out there. Anyway, what I kind of wanted to talk about is, I'm still having problems with speeding on my block. They put out that solar powered speed trap, which I'll, I'll be honest, like, I'm not a huge believer. And when you see the speed, you slow down, but I did notice a little bit of a decrease because of that. It since has gone away. And again, it seems as if people are just flying down the street with no regard. Like I mentioned, I'm trying the best I can to get all the signatures for my speed study. And that's become kind of a stopping point for me. I've got five signatures. I haven't been able to get FaceTime with my other neighbors to get the other five. I called Department, Department of Public Works about seeing if an exception can be made and no one got back to me. So I'm still kind of waiting on that. That was like over a week ago. There wasn't anyone that answered during business hours. I left a message and nobody responded to me. So. There's that. The other thing I'm gonna mention, which probably is going to be the unpopular opinion here, is last week, Mr. Powell made a comment on what sounded like patriotism and ways of showing your patriotism. What I kind of want to just put out there is that I think there's a, a number of different ways that you can show patriotism and the Pledge of Allegiance doesn't have to be the only one. You can vote, you can support veterans, especially homeless veterans. You can support national parks, you can buy local, you can celebrate diversity of your country. You can volunteer, you can visit a history museum, you can pay your taxes, like your property tax, like we just had a huge increase on. You can even criticize your nation's flaws while still feeling a sense of loyalty. So, you know, again, I think that there was a little bit of singling out with that comment. And, and to be completely fair, you know, thank you, Mr. Powell, for your service. I have nothing but respect for veterans. But I think that, again, pledging, pledging allegiance and putting your hand over heart, over your heart is not the only way to show patriotism. So that's all I got tonight.
Thank you. Next person, Mary Little.
Feel like we could have a one-on-one battle here. My name is Mary Lou Little. I live at thirty-eight forty-four Rahide Drive. I also was speaking to, I should look at the mayor, right? I was here last week to talk about the citations, the what is the word they use? It's not really a citation. It's a courtesy notice that your property is not doing very well. And mine came on the fifteenth of September and was going to be checked up on the twentieth of September. So they gave us five days. And it's interesting how going down the street, it was kind of sporadic on who got a citation and who did not get a citation. I filled out one of those papers. I don't know, something that I guess can take you to court. I got her a letter, I mean, an email back. It was for, that I had made a request and that they had closed the case and the comments, there were no comments, there was no information on that at all. So I have no idea where we stand on that. I think that there are a lot of people out here in the city who want everybody to live like they do and have the same standards that they do. You can't, you can't make judgments against people when you don't know them and you don't know their situation. I have neighbors two doors west of me. They bought a home, which was, it probably could have been condemned. It was really bad. And these guys are working there all the time trying to get this home into a livable state. They got cited because of their yard. And when they were contacted by a neighbor about this, he says, I'll go to court over this. And I thought, of course, what is going to be a top priority for someone? Having a house that they can live in or having their grass green? I mean, that is like a no-brainer. I think that there has to be some kind of checking in on the situation. And I know some people have weeds growing up through their fences and all over. We have a vacant lot behind the house across the street from us and it is got weeds up to here. I think we have to be fair. And if they're going to go out and start checking, they should start checking before the first of September and check at a time of year when there really is something that can be done, that we have enough time to do that. I'm just trying to think, oh. And I will tell you right now, and I take responsibility for this, I have taken responsibility for this with all of my neighbors. I have a house right next door to me. That is the home place for a church. It is. It's a Tongan church that centered in California. And that is where they have, they have their meetings there. They have everything there. They have a porta potty right there in the yard. And I said, we'll drive past and take a look at that. Well, guess what? I don't know if anything happened at that house, but that's when all of my neighborhood got cited on that. There has to be something that can be done about situations like that. I think it is a bigger priority and for as much as my lawn is dead, there's not one weed in my front yard because my husband has weeded all of that, hoping that next spring, we wouldn't have all this crappy weed stuff growing and we would start over. I mean, I have beautiful trees. I have beautiful perennials. A few years back, I had one of those beautiful yard in the city signs. We've never had, we've never had a crap. We've never had, we've never had a crappy looking yard until right now. And I'm just really sorry. I think there are some people who are looking to hurt other people. They, they are picky, picky, picky. And I think before we get like that, we need to find out what is going on with people, what their situation is, and we need to help people to manage the most important things first without forgetting the rest. That's all I have to say. I'm sorry. Anyway.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to say something with you? You didn't have a chance to write out your name. None? Okay. I close the public comments or turn over to a city manager. You have any comments?
There. Geez, sorry, found the mute button. No, I don't have any comments tonight. Mayor Pro Tem, I did want to note that I made a number of comments about code enforcement last week. I heard a couple of more things tonight on things like watering costs and inoperable vehicles that I could address just from a clarification standpoint. One of those I kind of alluded to last week in that we are putting together some educational or at least example materials that'll go on the webpage that address things like how much it does actually cost to water your lawn and keep it alive. Those are good note there by Mr. B. Sock. Another one was the size, you know, what exactly is responsible? I mean, I'm sorry, what exactly is required from us? Size-wise of your landscaping, also some examples of water-wise landscaping, that sort of thing. To the inoperable vehicles thing, just for a note of clarification that I didn't remember to say last week, which I wanted to, which was that one of the definitions of an operable vehicle is having your vehicle actually registered. So to Mr., to another, a different comment. Yeah, sometimes there are tires that are empty of air and can be filled up, or there are just issues with cars generally. But a lot of times it is also a, an extra or an individual issue in that the car just isn't licensed at all, which falls under the category of inoperable vehicle for purposes of the ordinance. I was going to bring up something on the positive side from the operations brief tonight, but for some reason I can't find the, the new one that came out. So I'll just encourage everybody to take a look at that as usual from a weekly standpoint. And that's all, sir. That's all I've got.
Thank you. The council. None. Okay, Mayor, you have anything to say?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Let me scan through this list right here. Miles, when you said you had, you tried to talk to Public Works, but no one answered your phone. We have Dan Johnson, the director of Public Works here tonight. So just hang in there, stay there. We have two more meetings after this regular meeting. And he can come down to see you or you can see him, can talk to him. Okay. Look at one, two, three, four, five, six, very much a code enforcement. So I wanted to check, I want to make this announcement to the people here tonight too. So Nico came at when we scheduled study for the code enforcement. Next meeting, is that right?
I believe we have the discussion scheduled for October 25th.
October 20, what? 25th? Yeah. So October 25th, if you have time or you, you want to come to our study meeting and we can discuss more on the code enforcement there, that's we can schedule that October 25th for, for study. Okay. Now I want to go to these items on our agenda tonight. But before we go to these items, I just want you to know, we went in advance, one week before we here tonight. So that means we have time to study and to ponder all these items on our agenda. Just let you aware of that. Now go to number seven, we have a public hearings tonight and that ordinance 22 dash 38. And now we'll ask the city manager to turn over the tile over to him for this.
Thank you, sir. So this is the first of the quarterly budget openings for the new fiscal year 2022-23. And as always, they're mainly made up of three categories, rollovers, grants, and then other items that fall under that category specifically. And we talked about this last week. And that's all from an introductory standpoint I have, sir.
Thank you. And now I would turn to, I can open the public hearing for the ordinance 22 dash 38. Anyone wants to speak for this particular ordinance 22 dash 38, just come to microphone and you can go ahead. Say your full name.
Jim B. Sock. With the, with the rollover and stuff, I understand all that. With the general fund increases, it puts our budget over $100 million. I understand the only way that we can buy vehicles, the 1.25 million dollars in vehicles is this way. I don't like that. I wish it was in the initial budget. The almost $75,000 for the park. I've already stated a way that we could track that to make sure that that was a worthwhile investment. The parking lot repairs at the UCC and Centennial Park. I think if the department heads were, were running budgets and stuff, we know that the parking lots only last a certain amount of time. It isn't like, you know, we had an opening in the ground and these needed to be done. These are things that needed to be done for years and put a little bit aside so we don't have to come up with $183,000 to do the limited amount that we're doing. Repair, replace the deck at the, at the ridge. Once again, this should be a budget item. What's going to be our return on investment of this 200, almost $30,000? I know it's a safety thing. I understand that, but it's $230,000. Are we going to get that money back as the citizens or is it going to be another supplement? Like the 1.3 million on the fitness center, you know, that we're never going to see. And if, if, if we're going to keep putting out all this extra money, why do we have these things? You know, at least they should be almost breaking even. You know, I could understand if that was a maybe $50,000 we were helping, but that's a lot of money. And then purchasing of tables, I don't have an issue with that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The, the only comment and concern that I have is I was not able to listen to your study meeting last week. So I don't know all the details. And as I studied and looked over the documents that were attached, I didn't see the details of that. And that's unfortunate and bad on, on me. But as a citizen, I, I thought that would be something that would be readily available. I just hope that you as city council members know every penny and every dollar that's being spent and that you're intimately involved with those figures and understand why and how that's coming about. And that you are, play an integral part. You represent us as, as the, as the citizens. The city manager and the, the city department heads do not represent us, you do. And so I would hope that you are really paying attention to that as well. Yes, you, you had a huge increase in the budget this year. And as Jim mentioned, it's over $100 million. That's pretty good for a city our size, I guess. But I, I hope that we get a good return on the investment that you are making and that we as citizens can see some of that return as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, I will close the public hearing and we'll turn over to council for the discussion or motion.
I move for approval of ordinance 22 dash 38.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, we'll turn over to the city recorder, Nico Kamat, for a roll call, please.
Councilman Fiddy Smanu.
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
No.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordville.
Yes.
Mayor Lang.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Hune.
No.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. Number eight, resolution 22 dash 146. And I will turn over to city manager for introduction.
Thank you, sir. The police department desires to enter into an MOU with the Utah Attorney General's office to assist in funding our ICAC task force, Internet Crimes Against Children, to grant them out in the amount of $12,000.
Good, thank you. Turn over to city council for a motion or discussion.
Move for approval of resolution 22 dash 146.
We have a motion, we have a second, with turn over to city recorder, Nico Kamat, please.
Councilman Nordville.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Fiddy Smanu.
Aye.
Mayor Lang.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Hune.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next item. Resolution 22 dash 147, turn over to city manager.
Thank you, sir. This would be a resolution approving going forward with the construction project to replace the deck and handrails at the Ridge Golf Club in the amount of $229,000. Action Roofing is the solicitor contractor bidder who responded with the most responsible bid would be awarded the contract.
Thank you. And now I'll turn over to the city council for motion for discussion.
Move to approve resolution 22 dash 147.
Second.
Motion a second. Oh. Nico Kamat for roll call, please.
Councilman Fiddy Smanu.
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordville.
Yes.
Mayor Lang.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Hune.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Resolution 22 dash 148, city, city manager.
Thank you, sir. I'm just waiting for this to load up. So we are executing a federal aid agreement for partial funding for a road project on Lancer Way between 27th West and 3200 West. These would be surface transportation funds or federal funds that we'd receive in partial amount to get that project going. The project itself won't start until 2025, but we're assembling the project, including all funding sources now.
Okay, council for discussion or motion.
I move for approval of resolution 22 dash 148.
Second.
They were motion a second. Nico Kamat, please for a call.
Councilman Nordville.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Fiddy Smanu.
Aye.
Mayor Lang.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Hune.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Good, thank you. Concerned agenda, resolution 22 dash 149, city manager, please.
Thanks, sir. No comment. There's nothing unusual on the one item.
Council.
Move to approve the single item on the consent agenda.
Second.
They have a motion, have a second. Turn over to our city recorder, Nico Kamat, please for a call.
Councilman Fiddy Smanu.
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordville.
Yes.
Mayor Lang.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Hune.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have no closes on tonight, right? City manager.
No. No need from us. Thank you.
Okay, good. We need one more motion, last motion. Thank you. So all those in the phase of all this motion, please say aye.
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 We, we adjourned and we have two more meetings after this regular meeting. We'll turn over to their time.
Hey, call to order the regular meeting of the redevelopment agency of West Valley City. We have all members in attendance, either in person or via Zoom. We have the minutes from our last meeting. Any discussion or motion on those?
A motion to approve the RDA minutes of September 6th.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Wayne, we have a report from you. You're on mute.
Thanks for reminding me. I'm on mute. No report tonight, sir.
Hey, we have a public hearing for to consider resolution 2208. If anyone's here to give comment to that, please stand up. Okay, we have none. So we'll close the public comment meeting. Any comment from the council or motion?
To approve resolution 22 dash 08.
Second.
Ms. Kamak.
Mr. Fiddy Smanu.
Aye.
Mr. Whitstone.
Yes.
Mr. Hune.
Yes.
Ms. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
Mr. Nordville.
Yes.
And Chairman Harmon.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We have a final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We'll now call to order the regular meeting of the building authority of West Valley City. Note that we've had an opening ceremony and a roll call. All are present, either electronically or in person. And we have the minutes of June 7th to consider.
I move for approval of those June 7th minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. That makes it unanimous. Any report from the chief executive officer, Mr. Pyle?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we have resolution 22 dash 05. This is to open and amend the fiscal year budget 2223. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, turn it over to the authority.
Motion to approve resolution 22 dash 05.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Kamak.
Mr. Fiddy Smanu.
Aye.
Mr. Whitstone.
Yes.
Mr. Harmon.
Yes.
Mr. Hune.
Yes.
Ms. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Nordville.
Yes.
And Chairman Christensen.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Seeing no other business, we'll take one last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you for sticking with us for three meetings. And we'll see everybody next week, I hope.